The Treasurer will now take the role.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fauzer?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Spawn Cellar?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Hofer. Back to the brass. All right. Moving on, is recommendation that regular meetings of the Portage Lakes Joint Vocational School District Board of Education take place the Thursday of each month at 6:00 PM at Portage Lakes Career Center, 4401 Shriver Road, Uniontown, Ohio. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wright, call the roll. Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fauzer?
Yes.
Mr. Spawn Cellar?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Motion passes. This time, the President will appoint the OSBA Legislative Liaison and a Student Achievement Liaison. Do we have any volunteers for those positions?
A volunteer for the Legislative Liaison.
Mr. Hofer has volunteered for the Legislative Liaison position. We have a volunteer for the Student Achievement Liaison. Any one? Anyone? Was that a nod of approval? Or no?
I think I saw his name.
What's that?
Maybe says Mr. Hofer does OSBA.
He's legislative at this point.
Yeah.
Could you be both?
Yeah. He goes to the OSBA things.
Sure. Yeah, okay. Mr. Hofer has volunteered to be both. All right. Congratulations, Mr. Hofer.
Thank you.
We'll let that one on before we begin. All right. Moving on to item nine. Be it resolved that all of the following items appearing in the agenda constitute the Consent Calendar and are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the Board or Superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the Consent Calendar and voted upon separately. Can I have a motion in a second for item nine?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Campbell, thank you. Mr. Hercules? Discussion? Mr. Wright, could you call the roll, please?
Just a minute.
One second.
Just some English, like in L, Brookler and Eckler really needs to be changed to Brookler and Grayden. Under Legal Consultants.
Oh!
There was one other one that I noticed. That was one.
The item L?
Yeah, item under item L.
Okay.
That just needs change to Brookler and Grayden.
Former name.
Former name.
Okay.
That organization merged.
We can amend it next time.
Yeah, we can amend it.
Are we going to agree then to amend that at a later date? Okay. Excellent. So do you have a motion in a second? Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fauzer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Spawn Cellar?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Motion passes. This time, item 10, I'd like to open the floor for visitors' comments. Do we have any visitors' comments? Going once, going twice. There being none, we'll move on to item 11, the Report of the Treasurer. Let the record show, it is 6:10, and we are now moving to the regular meeting portion of tonight's meeting. Item number one is a recommendation to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 21st, 2023, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Oh, I thought you said. I did. I didn't say second ever. Go ahead. Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fauzer?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Spawn Cellar?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number two is a recommendation to approve the financial reports, check register, bank reconciliation, investment report, and comparative financial report for the month of December 2023 as presented, subject to audit.
So moved.
Second.
Hofer's second.
Mr. Hercules was motion. Okay. Mr. Hofer was second.
It was Dave.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was Dave. I'm sorry. It was Mr. Cohen. I'm sorry. I'm telling you what. Mr. Wright, would you call the roll, please? Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Fauzer?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Spawn Cellar?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number three is a recommendation to approve a resolution requesting tax advances from the County Treasurer Fiscal Officer pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 321.24, tax year 2023, payable on 2024, as presented.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Hercules? This just allows the district to receive real estate tax revenue periodically over the next few months instead of all at once in like April, so we don't have to wait till April. Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fauzer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Spawn Cellar?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number four does not require any action. It's just an opportunity to discuss the purpose and function of filing the annual tax budget. In this case, it's for fiscal year 2025, and to give an opportunity for the Board and/or the public to have any input they may have into that. Usually, no one has any input, so I just describe what this document actually does. As part of the annual budgeting process for the county, this kind of starts the whole process for fiscal year 25. This document allows us to show the county what our needs are for the upcoming year. For districts that have voted debt levies, this document is particularly important because it helps the county set your tax rates so that you can collect enough taxes to pay the debt on your facilities that have already been voted. In our case, we don't have any voted debt. We have one piece of unvoted debt from April 2021 that was for the Safety Services Building that was originally taken out at $1 million for 10 years at 1.805%, which is awesome. We are in, we've paid, we've paid two full cycles towards that debt, so we are done with that at the end of 2030. I'll say what I say every chance I get to in front of this board, which is, we have one levy that supports this school district. It was passed in 1983, started collection in 1984. It was passed at 4.35 mils, and it collects at the statutory minimum of two mils today for Class 1 and Class 2 real estate, which means agricultural, residential, commercial, and industrial. They're all at the two mil floor. Our tax rate cannot be any lower than it is right now. If it drops lower, it actually adjusts back to two. But as far as the tax budget goes, that's the extent of the purpose for us. This goes to the county. The county will take a look at what we have shown as our needs for the year, what our debt looks like for the year, and what our levies look like for the year. And the next thing this board will see is a certification of the tax rate. It's called the Amounts and Rates Resolution. You will see that in February or March, depending on how motivated the county is to get it out early. And at that point in time, the board will have to pass that as well to accept those. But that concludes the Treasurer section for tonight. Excellent. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Wright. On to item 12, the Report of the Superintendent.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
Okay, Mr. Clark?
Welcome back, floor. Good to see everyone. Spawn Cellar, thank you. Welcome back. You know, a few things, just coming back after the holidays and the festival of lights and then getting rolling. Our phlebotomy senior-only program is up and running. I'm going to ask Ms. Salee publicly to observe because every time I step in, they got needles out, and I'm not sure that I'm going to make it out or not, so thanks in advance for that. No, off and running, and an excited group that's in there, so hopefully that's one that can grow and move forward, so other than that, we're rolling along. And the fun part of my board meetings is to introduce our Students of the Month, so I believe we have two, but I'll read the other names just in case they're hiding somewhere. Anthony Adamson is an 11th grader from Manchester. He was nominated by his building trades instructor, Mr. Irwin. He stopped by to see me in the morning and said, "I won't be there tonight." He's working at his grandfather's nursing home, so I said, "Well, that'll be okay. You can do that." Declan Parven, I don't believe Declan made it either. Declan is a senior from Coventry. He's in our Design Communication and Marketing Program, and Ms. Eible recommended him. Just an unbelievable artistic inspirational brain this young man has, and it's, you know, the kids all love him and his ideas and stuff just flow great. That's me saying that, not her speech, but just, we have, we have a great crew here, as I say always. Shyla Slager, I believe is here. Come on up. And, you know, our process for nominating is any teacher or staff member can nominate. So usually, if it's an academic teacher who may nominate a student, you know, I kind of just check in with the lab instructor too to say, "Hey, does everyone kind of agree on this?" And vice versa. But Ms. Hoover, who is teaching, co-teaching our government course this year, says, "Shyla has made great improvements in our class. The first quarter was difficult for Shyla. However, at the start of the second quarter, Shyla made her grades and assignments her main priority. Shyla uses her focus period to study and ask questions about her assignment, assignments. She is a determined young lady and is wanting to do well at her time at PLCC. Shyla is making great strides in her academics and is positive, hard-working student." I said, "All right, that's good to hear." So I called Ms. Marina, her pre-nursing student, and I said, or I emailed, and the return was, "Oh, my gosh, she is so awesome." I can write a bio too, if you want me to have one there for you to read. I said, "You don't have to write one, I think that'll cover it." So that's, that's pretty good stuff. Shyla's also a junior, Springfield, and in pre-nursing. Asked a few questions. Her hobbies include golf and track. If she could travel anywhere in the world, she would travel to Greece. And if she was stuck on a desert island, who would she want to be stuck with and why? I would want to be stuck with my sister. We'd be able to talk, keep each other calm, and she's super smart and clever. Someone to keep by your side, so good, congratulations. And next, Kias Atkins. Kias, step on up. Always that smile, it's the smile you get first thing coming in the door, so I appreciate that too. If you know our auto instructor, Mr. Bayless, he's a quiet, humble, very funny man, but a man of few words, so when he, when he puts one of his nominations up, you know, there's a lot in these few words. Kias is very respectful and helpful. He stays on tasks and asks for help as it is needed. Kias is a very knowledgeable, hard-working young man. Well, let's get to know Kias a little better. Kias is interested in music, playing with his guitar. What is his favorite movie and why? Interstellar, because it, its production is so well polished and tells an amazing story. It's the only movie to ever make me cry. If he could travel, he would like to go to Denmark, Norway, Hungary, and Sweden. They're all close, so that could be, you could do that all in one deal. On a desert island, my buddy Jordan, because he has a lot of military survival knowledge, and he is extremely charismatic. Also a good choice, Kias, congratulations. Families, thanks for coming. I know as riveting and as exciting as the beginning of our board meeting was, it gets even better. It doesn't get better. The general board, maybe you can do that at this time and carry on.
Get back contingencies. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Congratulations.
Interstellar.
Ms. Trippney, would you like to?
Hi, everybody. I'll be quick, as I like to usually be. So our accrediting bodies with higher education will not let us talk about certain things until they have approved it. So my approvals are taking a little longer with the Ohio Department of Higher Education. They're going through a massive amount of turnover down there, and so they're sitting there. So I'm not really allowed to talk about it yet, but I'll talk in generalities, and I think if you listen really closely to some of the architect's speech, then I think you'll probably figure some things out, but, so for next year, we are already planning and looking ahead, and I believe we have pretty much everything set in stone. Again, we're just waiting on those approvals. We will have a brand-new cause offering. We'll have a brand-new medical offering. We'll have two manufacturing offerings. We'll have a drone offering, and we'll have a brand-new transportation offering, which I also hope introduces an interesting new partnership to PLCC. We will have 14 programs in all, eight full-time and six part-time, and then we will actually be offering 26 chances to take adult education courses over the course of next year. So we're really hoping again for record enrollment. We're hoping that we're twisting some things to put a new scope on old ideas and make them fresh, and again, we're hoping to meet some of those industry demands for in-demand jobs. Thank you for your support. Hopefully, next month, I can give better details, but I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. All right. Well, we've invited Tim Rusick from FMD Architects to come and review the design plans, and Jim is here from SHUK, and is here to support, right? Yes, yes, yes. Jim was here as the supervisor of the little projects that we had this summer, and we certainly requested him again because he is very communicative and supportive of the things that are happening here, so we really do appreciate that you're here, Jim. Okay, all right. So, Tim?
I have the computer back there, so approach.
Yo, have it too. Oh, yeah. It's up there too.
Let me just wake this back up, one second. So I will unfortunately pipe presentation back here. Is that okay?
That's fine. That's for all of you to do, really.
Mike, we're good, okay? So, good evening, everybody, again. Tim Rusick, FMD Architects. The goal of today's meeting is an update to the Board. We've been proceeding for the last couple of months, coordinating greatly with SHUK on the addition for the dental assisting lab, and also the addition and renovation for the welding lab on the east side of the building. With this, there are three stages in construction documents, schematic design, design development, and construction documents. The set you have in front of you there and some images that we're going to show on the screen represents the design development package. So we're in the 75, 80% completion of the documents. We're forecasting with the coordination with SHUK to have construction documents, the actual set that we build and get permits from, completed in February. Coordinating with SHUK to get some mobilization moving forward, ultimately the permits, and get construction going. I know Jim will note, or if we ask him, that budgeting right now, we are on track based upon the grants and everything that's been provided, so we're not doing any adds or anything. We're staying on track and delivering what was originally the goal of the school for both dental assisting and the welding lab. Nothing is being stripped away because it's too much or out of the ordinary. So with that, I'll note that the next two images that we'll show were presented to planning and zoning. We had two, we had three or four meetings with them, actually, a pre-meeting and then two presentations, one at the beginning of January and one just this past Wednesday. We have full planning and zoning approval for both projects, seen as one, but both additions. So that milestone has been accomplished. We've also had pre-meetings with the chief building official, going over code, life safety. All of that has passed as well, so we always like to have those meetings and bring them into the design to make sure that once we've submitted, there's no kind of unknowns or things that haven't been followed up. So just a quick, and I won't take too much of your guys' time, but the image on the left or the right here focuses on the existing and then the new in the green, so we are connecting, let's see if I can change this to. The, there is a corridor, new connection, running east and west. North is to the left here, so there's an existing door here and an existing door. That'll be the new connection to kind of complement the already existing corridor to the north here, and then the dental assisting lab will occur within this space here. There are some views that I can show you aerial-wise, just to give a sense of that space, so it will be occurring in this area here. The existing door and the existing door here, this will be the new corridor through here. I think that's showing up. Yep. And then this will be the interior entry into that dental assisting suite. Staying with the same construction, a low-slope roof, half-inch per foot, the same membrane roofing. It's going to slope from the north to south. We'll have gutters and downspouts into that area. We're coordinating with Civil for all the drainage. The exterior will be the same single-score blocks, similar to what we have here on the existing on the interior. The goal from the beginning was making sure it looks like it's always been there. We're not adding on anything with metal panel or anything. It's just, it's always been a piece of the project and something that would help and increase the flow of students as well, so that other corridor, creating a nice loop there. I'll just scroll through these a few more, just to give you a sense of the space. And then for welding, on the backside here, I'm going to zoom into this a bit, so we are on the east side of the project. You can see the dental just beyond. There's an existing storage structure here that is going to be removed. The existing ramp, originally, we were thinking that was going to come out, but we have investigated some of the existing footings along this wall, that if we do take that out, it will expose too much of those footings that could incur some additional cost relieving frost concerns. So we are going to renovate the edge of this ramp because it's falling apart. So again, being conscious of the funds and doing our due diligence early on, so we're not opening up a can of worms later and saying, "Well, what are we going to do now?" We've been through the building quite a bit with SHUK, with the engineers. I was just out here this morning at 7:30, walking a few things with some mechanical engineers and electrical, so we're doing our due diligence early on to make sure nothing is missed. And then the addition for welding will be in this area here. This, this door and the overhead door pretty much come out into this space. You still have the turning radius for vehicles dropping everything off. There's, there's plenty of space back there, and then there'll be a new collection system for welding. There actually isn't one right now, so we're upgrading the system completely within that space. So a quick little view of the welding itself, or the dental itself. The corridor here, there's two sides of entry into the space. You have a large reception area with seating, so basically setting up everything that the students are going to experience in real life. We've coordinated with the staff here, also with Jamie, who works in a dental office right now, so it wasn't just we're us designing in a vacuum. There has been a lot of input for the layout and the spacing here. But equipment room, panel alcove room for the x-ray, sterilization area, a lab, an open work area in the center, a specialized treatment room, and then your standard dental seats that you would see with the casework and sinks in between. So that fills that area. Nice open space. Teachers in that area can see the entire room rather than feeling things are too compartmentalized. In the area down here, we have two offices flanking both sides of the entry, so there are eyes on those entry and also eyes in the room itself. This is a little bit of an older plan, so I'm going to jump up here real quick. It did switch around a little bit from what we had submitted, but two offices here, and then you can see there is a little hallway back here, and then two spaces, both designed to be classrooms, but one classroom here, and then this could be future, can be a variety of different things, could be a meeting space, and then storage in between. There is a restroom within the dental space because there was thought of, students don't have to leave the actual suite, they can stay within the space the entire time. And then janitor's closet and a few other storage areas. So this is a quick peek into the construction documents, which is the language, I think SHUK speaks more maybe than a few of the individuals here, but it really gets into the details and dimensions of what we're actually doing to instruct the project. Jump back to welding. Welding's a similar thing here, that the areas in yellow is what we're going to renovate. So we have on the right the existing, existing welding lab and that storage, and then the ramp area. The welding gets renovated, we'll talk about that in a second, and then the green represents the addition on that east side, that bump out that we talked about. From the entry in, right now, the welding area has the mezzanine up top, has the restroom sink. It's not ADA accessibility, so we're turning that upper area into storage, bringing that restroom on the lower level, so not only updating the area for welding accessibility, but for restrooms and other things like that, so we're updating, bringing that restroom down there. And also, the lockers, they're upstairs, we're bringing them downstairs as well. So there's a nice entry area, a nice clean space. The classroom is tied to that clean space as well with a VR welding area in that closet. Office that looks upon the main entry, but also has a viewing into the welding area itself. And once you come through the double doors, there's hand sink, emergency shower, and then welding booths flanking each side, so a teacher here can have a nice view of the entire space. As you continue to the east and to the addition, nice large jib crane, overhead door and a swing door here with a tool room, and then a gas manifold. So material coming in, there's a, there's a storage bins on the outside right now. We're allowing space for inside storage rather than the containers on the outside. Through that large overhead door, that jib crane is going to be able to take material, large material, and move it effortlessly into place where it can be moved over to like the plasma cutting table, cut down into smaller pieces, and then kind of work itself back into the building. Right now, that was one of the big things, of just being able to bring in large material, so that jib crane will be able to do that. That's kind of overall. I mean, we've got the drawings as well, if you wanted to flip through them, but this represents the set. Like I said, we're about seventy-five, eighty percent complete. We'll finish it up in February. We also had some finishes there if you wanted to look at them. That was from a meeting earlier this morning for the dental assisting lab. There's carpet samples, LVT, also the materials that have been selected for the dental seats and the casework as well. Great colors that tie into the color scheme for the building. So, we feel it's a nice, bright, vibrant, modern space for that too. So, it's kind of overall, the, the main goal, I think, for the presentation here is to update everybody and also hopefully receive approval to move forward to the next step and just continuing the drawings as we, as we have planned. Thank you for your time. Any questions, comments?
I like the idea of bringing the gas manifolds inside.
Yeah.
Bring that high pressure stuff inside where it's secure.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I have a question, Tim, but it's probably more for SHUK.
Okay.
Throughout this process, as you know, we have here building trades, HVAC, electrical welding. So, throughout the process of the construction, will you be working with the teachers of those programs to make sure they get a little bit of, those students get a little bit of real-world experience, come out and see, you know, from excavation to construction to the weld, you know, when you're setting bar joists, the welding, the HVAC, be able to give all those students an opportunity to see exactly what they've been learning, put into, put into real-world practice?
Yeah. Well, I would love to set up specific meetings. Even the drone was mentioned earlier. I'm a licensed FAA drone pilot, so I will be out here getting aerial photos of the construction as it goes, the joist going in, the roof being done. If we can coordinate with the school to have classes, maybe a dedicated time period, not only for that, but for the footings like you mentioned. FMD and SHUK, we've already discussed it and would love the opportunity to be a part of that.
Good point, Shook.
And the students are going to be dismantling the, the storage shed that you see, you know, as part of the, the project too. So, they've already, you know, begun.
They built it many years ago as well.
Uh, yeah. It was a quickly put-together thing, kind of flew under the radar kind of a thing, yeah, I would say, right?
Yeah, so we'll have our, our baseline schedule, which is going to show activities as they come up to the communication piece that the teachers are making on this day. This is the activity that we're going to be doing. So, like, again, like every project, communication, looking ahead, getting all everyone's ready.
Yep. That's great. The challenge will be the summer, you know, so much is going to be done during the summer. So, that's, and that's where it's going to be important even to have some footage that the teachers can then connect to, but we got to get it done and in there by August.
On the shower area, notice you mentioned the shower area. Is that shower area drained or not? I was a chem teacher and I remember we got a new area and they had a drain to it. And, and I go, "What's the drain?" And the guy goes, "Well, we got to drain stuff away." And I go, "Well, if there's hazardous waste on that person and we're going to wash that person off and it gets that hazard now, gets down in the drain, it's harder to clean if it's in the drain than if it just goes on the floor." Now, is this going to be a drained wash area or a, or just the floor?
Yeah, yeah, no, sorry. To me, probably, because we're coordinating with the engineers, plumbing engineers. So, there are drains in that welding area, but not directly in that emergency shower area.
Okay. So, so the emergency shower will have a shower, the floor is the floor.
Correct.
Because it's easier to clean that and take care of the hazard.
Very much so. You're, you're concerned with the emergency and that having that contained, the safety of the individual, and then the whole cleanup once the individual is safe.
It's easier before it gets in the drain.
Very much so.
So, you were referring specifically to the safety shower?
Yes. But if you go on beyond that, then you have the sinks in a chem lab that do have the drains that do take it down there. And so, I'm sitting there between two guys going, "Okay, we got to, we have no drain here because we don't want the hazard to go into the drain." And then we have all the, all the, the water and all the sinks in the chem lab that do have drains and it all goes down. So, if the, if the person, the child, whatever, the, the student puts something down that drain, now the whole system has to be taken care of in that drain. So, I'm just, just wondering, what, what is the latest on, on doing that? So, you're saying if it's on the people, there's no drain?
Correct.
But if there's a student that pours something down the drain like he thinks, "Oh, well, there's a clog in it, I think I'm going to clean it out," and he puts something down there, you've got issues if it's in the drain.
He don't have access to that.
We just got a new lab, you know, when I, before I left teaching. Those are the things, those are the things that we were coming up with and we're going, "Okay, how are we going to do it the next time?" And so.
Gotcha.
We got balls in there, which way is that the drain is going to go or if there's one at all. I'm just saying, because stuff happens in that classroom.
Perhaps on the next update.
We'll have a full mock-up of everything.
See what they say. All right. Okay. It is causing enough problems, I'll be quiet. Tim, thank you. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Tim.
Yeah, I have a couple of other things before we dive into the, the meat of the agenda. I mentioned in my update about the solar eclipse and, and the conversations I know that you're having, you know, with your boards as well. The PLCC superintendents will be meeting on Monday and I, I think we all have a pretty clear idea of, of what we are doing at this point, is no students in professional development or something along those lines. In line with that is the Skills USA competition, which was greatly disappointed with that. Apparently, there's going to be a Zoom call next week to perhaps announce, hopefully something that they're going to play with, you know, change the date or something. This impacts the entire state of Ohio and to think about placing children in, in a bus and into a town that is going to be heavily populated, way more than it normally is, is just not a safe thing. So, I'm hoping that Skills USA has reconsidered changing the date so that we can perhaps be a part of it. So, we're crossing our fingers on that. And then my last thing, the, the bags in front of you. So, I want you to imagine that you have applied to PLCC for the number one program that you want. And in three of our high schools, you are called down to the, to the auditorium and you are given your bag and you are, then you are to open it up. And we video this in those schools and they open it up. And you can open up yours because you, you have a message in your, your bag as well. But it, it's that excitement of finding out, did I get in the program I wanted or in the top three that I wanted? And then, of course, you always have a little bit of swag or something in there, but I believe there's a letter.
All right. I made it a huge.
There you go. Designing cheesecake.
I know that, yeah.
Yes, that's what I wanted. So, it is a very exciting day. It takes about, what, fifteen minutes, Krista, to do that? So, it doesn't take much time, but it, it is, it's a memorable event that our students talk about and it's something that, you know, Krista designed and developed, what, three years ago, I think it was, Krista? So, so there you go. You get a little bit of an experience of that.
Can we roll back the clock like forty-five years?
Okay. I'm going to dive into the agenda now. Item number two, settlement agreement and resignation. I'm recommending that the board approve the attached settlement agreement. So moved.
Second. Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw, motion. And Mr. Hofer?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fauzer?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Spawn Cellar?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number three, I'm recommending that the board approve the resignation of Sarah Smith, an administrative assistant at the high school.
Second.
Mr. Hercules.
How'd you get this, Kelly?
Mr. Wright, you call the roll, please.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Fauzer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Spawn Cellar?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number four, I'm recommending that the board approve the employment of Gary Pepper, our new maintenance custodial staff person.
So moved. Second. Mr. Campbell? Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fauzer?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Spawn Cellar?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number five, amending the contract of Ron Bayless, our automotive adult education instructor. We had two people working in tandem and one of them needed to leave, so Mr. Bayless stepped up, so I'm asking that we amend his contract. So moved.
Second. Mr. Hercules?
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fauzer?
Yes.
Mr. Spawn Cellar?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number six, construction documents. I'm recommending the approval of the program of requirements and schematic design of our design development for our project, as you heard earlier.
Motion second. So moved. Mr. Hofer?
Second.
Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Wright?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Spawn Cellar?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number seven, equipment donations. As you know, we, we almost have this on the agenda every month, this time from Claybin Ford and Greco Concrete for automotive technology and building trades. I recommend that the approval.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Fauzer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Spawn Cellar?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
My last item, another donation for the Festival of Lights. I'm recommending that the board approve it.
So moved. Mr. Campbell?
Second.
Mr. Hercules?
Mr. Wright?
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Spawn Cellar?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Spawn Cellar?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
My last item, another donation for the Festival of Lights. I'm recommending that the board approve it.
So moved. Mr. Campbell?
Second.
Mr. Hercules?
Mr. Wright?
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Hercules?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Fauzer?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Spawn Cellar?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Jividen?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Thank you. Moving on to the item number thirteen, new business. Does anyone have new business for the board? There being none, we'll move forward with board member informal. Mr. Cohen?
Thank you for the construction updates. Lots of really exciting stuff happening here. I just realized driving over here, this is starting my ninth year. Wow. Yeah. Is it mine? No, eighth year, eighth year, unfortunately. Campbell's been here a lot longer. But I think I'm the second longest-tendered person here and I, I'm just, I'm so impressed with the transformation of this place in just, in just a few years under your leadership, Kim and the administration. It's just a really, really impressive place and appreciate, you know, being here and being a part of this board, getting to witness all of the great stuff that's happening here.
Well, I guess first I should congratulate Bob and Dave for being here so long. But also, yes, the, the construction update is exciting. That would be good to see that happening, a lot of good things happening. Kim, I have one question on Skills USA. Have you spoken to a lot of other vocational and technical schools around?
Yes, yes.
What, what's the consensus of other superintendents?
Well, they're upset. And, and I think unfortunately, as I said in my update to you, that certainly the tragedy in Tuskegee Valley, you know, further caused school districts to think about travel. So, I believe, you know, we were supposed to commit by, I think, January 16th about going to state and not enough people committed. And that's why all of a sudden, we've been summoned to a Zoom that we're hoping that it will change the direction. Because, you know, we have some very disappointed students here.
Sure.
And we have two in particular who did well last year as juniors, who were expecting to do very well as seniors. So, I'm hoping that they took off their glasses and, and see what, what's going on.
Well, money talks and if no one's going.
Yeah, right. They make money by us being there.
That's what I was hoping, that's what I was hoping for, what you said.
Yes, I'm, I'm hoping to.
Looking forward to, I think this is maybe my third year or fourth year. I don't know, there's a gap in there, so.
Yeah, we took a vacation.
Looking forward to another big year here. It's exciting.
I want to say how awesome this is. Thank you for the people whose brain power came up with this awesome job. Thank you so much. And I'm excited to see the new kids come next year and also, do we get a list of who that is?
Of who they are?
Did you send it already?
I think you asked me last year specifically for commentary.
I did. I'm nosy, I want to see who's going. And, and I, just, our kids have just benefited, there are commentary kids and I know all the rest of the kids too, but I'm just a big fan of this place and what you teach and how you teach it and the support that you give to our kids. So, thank you very much to all the staff and to your leadership, Kim. This is really pretty awesome. Thank you so much.
Well, I just want to say, I'm proud to be back. I was here ten years ago and it's, it's a, it's a privilege to me. The Career Center was always a special place for students to have the opportunity to make a living and work with their hands. And, and with the architect, the designs you have for the, for the dentists and the welders, I mean, that, that dentist is just like going into a dentist office. And when they go out, out for their career, it's, it's going to be automatic. They're going to feel, they're going to feel at home and, and I just, I have total respect for the Career Center, myself. I was a union carpenter for thirty, for forty years. I built a lot of schools and buildings and, and I know Joe's a bricklayer and, and he, he's done many, many big jobs and we're fortunate to have him on our board at Manchester and, and here also. And that's, like I say, it's just a privilege to be back. Thanks.
Welcome, welcome. Wow, that's great, all of it. Thank you for the architect. Thank you for the architect. That was just a conundrum we came across in the day, so I don't really, you guys get sued now, not me. Yeah, I know. Well, I'm not there anymore. I was always sitting there going, now, is it going to be my fault? The principal and the superintendent about it. The USA, that was bothering me when that was all happening. I hope there's going to be calmer minds that work on getting that all to happen. And again, thank you very much, Mr. Clark does a wonderful job introducing these people, and I like the intercellar movement, too.
Next. Mr. Campbell? Welcome back, Mr. Spawn Cellar. Oh, thank you. I'm here when I first came, so that's great, a lot of changes happening, and again, it's the collective efforts of, you know, the leadership that's involved, you know, Kim with the idea, and of course, it doesn't happen unless the money's involved, right? So everybody has great ideas. If you don't have the money, then it doesn't matter. So we appreciate all that, all the hard work. Thank you for the update on the designs and kind of going through there. It's, I think, most everybody has built something or will, or are building something, you know, in their districts, and it's always just like crazy to see all the 17 million things that go in there, and you see like seven. Why does this take so long? Right? So we appreciate that, and I mean, every month, it's just like, how many more people we have coming in? You know, classes are getting filled up more, so it's just exciting, exciting times. So I don't know, if you guys have seen, you know, the football thing, they talk about how many opportunities, how many draft opportunities there are in a year, you know, however many there are, grounds of, you know, 192 draft positions, and there's 400,000 trade jobs, you know, out there. And it's really, and it's really one of those things, when you see that commercial, you're like, that's right, and we're, you know, we're doing our part to do that, so we appreciate it.
That's a well-done commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll switch gears just for a little bit, for a second. Some updates from Columbus. Governor Dewine signed House Bill, or Senate Bill 91, which makes changes to the law regarding fraud, waste, and abuse of public funds. Doesn't really affect us as board members, but it will require the treasurer and superintendents of our districts to have annual training. So that's been deemed. I won't go on with anything else that's going on in Columbus right now because it's just, it's a show. Yeah, it's a mess. Senate Bill 208, sponsored by Senator Christine Roganer out of Hudson, requires city, exempted village, or local school districts to include in its open enrollment policy an exemption for military children. So I'm sure Columbus, as it gets rolling, will have more updates. Thank you for the construction updates. Thank you, staff, for what you do. This is interesting. Like I said, well, me and Rick Spawn Cellar, probably, and Dan Fauser, some of the oldest. I never had the opportunity for JVS, you know, it was OJT when I started working, when I landed my job, so this is very interesting. On the construction, as you're going over that, our minds work differently. Like, you brought some things up, Rick, you brought things up. In the welding lab, this is something that puts your feather in your cap, puts some thinking together. We've got an opportunity. We have a robotics class where we teach robotics. Integrate that with welding and robotic welding. So we do that in automation, you know, the auto companies do a lot of that. So there's another opportunity down the road with that. When you gave that update, I like, well, we've got this other class, you can integrate some of those things right together and merge that. So that's something to work on, as you say, Bob, when the money gets there, you know, so, but it's, so it's something to think about. Happy New Year, everybody, and we're off and running, and thank you for all your hard work, the staff, what you do here. It's made a big difference in a few short years.
I will concur with the entire board. Impressive presentations, all.
Glad to see it.
Want to thank Mr. Campbell for a very successful 2023.
Gave you a lot of time to fill in.
Right, yeah. A few swings in the cage, that was all right, that was good. And we're looking forward to a very successful 2024. I can't be more impressed with the further, expansion is one thing, but it's really the professionalization of technical training, which is really the thing that you see when you walk in the front door, it's the thing that you see when you meet all the people